All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for the Lakewood City Council in Lakewood, Colorado on August 8th, 2022 at 7:08. I appreciate everybody coming out or joining us online. Apologize, we're getting started a little bit late this evening. However, if you would like to join us via telephone, that number is 720-707-2699 with the webinar ID of 849-5732-0840. That'll also be your Zoom ID, again, of 849-5732-0840. And you'll press pound once again when we get to the different public comment opportunities. If you please press star nine, that will raise your hand to speak, and then we'll ask you to mute at star six. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Janson.
Here.
Mia Guerrero.
Here.
Pulver.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
Springsteen. Stewart.
Here.
Strong.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll now ask that you rise for a pledge of allegiance. We will remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. Certainly would like to send our thoughts and sympathies to the El Paso County Sheriff's Department in the loss of Deputy Andrew Perry last night.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, I'll read our statement, a conflict of interest. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with terms of Chapter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Chapter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. So we will now move into general public comment. And this is the point in the meeting where the public's invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that you respect the decorum in chambers and if you are calling in online as well. There's a three-minute time limit for those in chambers. You'll see a timer, and when you're at 30 seconds, it should be yellow, and when your time is up, it'll go red. If you are calling in online, or you are old-fashioned, and you will hear a ding at 30 seconds, and then another ding, and I'll politely ask you to wrap it up. So, under general, Mr. Mace, come on down. Good evening.
Give me about three seconds, Mayor, please.
You betcha. Take your time.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. James Mace, what do I? I'm here tonight, A, because tonight is my first meeting back in three years. So, I'm also here because, Mayor, I have a question directed toward you, and this is going to take you back a few years. Do you remember what I asked you back in 2015, when you first took over as council, as the mayor for Lakewood City? For... Do you remember?
I would say you're probably going to tell me in a second.
Yeah, I am.
Thank you.
Do you remember me asking you not to allow council to use the word disabled or retarded? Do you remember me mentioning that to you? I am asking this council, from this point on, not to use the word disabled or retarded. We are not disabled and retarded. We are human, just like everybody else, okay? We have certain challenges that we have to put up with every day, but you know what? We all overcome them. And you know what? I've been watching the YouTube channel, and some of the things I've caught this council saying, and I can't say anything, is atrocious to me. And I'm really, 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 I can't be mad because some of the council members don't know me, but please, the word that I would really appreciate you guys using would be challenged or ask when you're dealing with somebody that has a challenge, that please, please ask the person the language that you need to use. Because in my estimation, it is very offensive and very, very highly offensive for any elected official to use the word disabled or retarded. Now, Mayor, I have one other question. The question that I have is this. Council doesn't remember this. Some of you do, some of you don't, but I am planning on doing a refresher course on how to talk to somebody that is an wheelchair. Would this council like to learn from somebody that is in that position? Yes or no?
So certainly, Mr. Mason, your time is running out, but you did leave us off with that last time, and I'm sure if council would be interested, we'd love to have you come back and continue on your education.
Thank you.
You betcha. Nice to see you.
Nice seeing you.
Okay, next up, we have Joan Poston, and you pooled your time. So Sean, I see you here. Pete is here, and Paul. So there's only one other name, Kathy Kentner. If there's anybody else while we're getting set up who wishes to speak, a public comment, please come down and see Mr. Robb. If anybody online wishes to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand.
I increased the font from last time.
Star nine.
An important part, I kind of made it bigger. Thank you. Good evening, Council. A couple weeks ago, Council adopted Ordinance 2022-12, Changes to the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative. These changes included unwritten amendments made on the fly, amendments that the public, and even most of you on council, couldn't see. The only way for anyone to know what was actually passed, the only oversight and transparency we have in such a case, is to look for the official publication in the newspaper. Lakewood City Charter allows publication by title only, except in the case where amendments are made. Then, it requires the text of the amendments be included in the publication. This is the publication in the newspaper of record for Lakewood. The publication for Ordinance 2022-12 does not include the text of the amendments. It does include a link, sort of implying that the text would be there, but when you click on the link, this is all that shows up, and when you click on recently adopted ordinances, it says there are none. And Ordinance 2012-22 cannot legally go into effect until 30 days after it has been properly published. When will it be published correctly? Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Ms. Poston, you're up. So we're going to wait for you to get to the microphone.
I know, just a second.
And then, since you have two others here, we'll go ahead and give you seven minutes.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And just for the record, we do require three to have 10 minutes, so I'm giving some leeway.
I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me when you emailed it to me?
So let's just get to public comment, please.
Good afternoon, Council. Actually, it's good evening. I've come before you because last Thursday, I did file a complaint about an incident that I addressed in the 7/11 meeting, that I had come upon a group of people coming out of a meeting room, and somebody had seen them go in, and there had been 30 minutes of discussion. And at that time, Sophia said they were talking about platform shoes and picking up their mail. So they assigned me an independent officer, and I did some background research on her, and there seemed to be some difficulty in determining when she was with, left the city, because you have to be away from the city for two years before you can serve as an independent ethics officer. So after I sent this email that I gave to you, to the county clerk, and I also sent it to the people that were involved, I heard from Robb stating that Ms. Klein had been with the city only from 1314, 2005, to 12, to 221, 2014. So I sent an email with Michelle Klein's LinkedIn, which I have given you a copy of, because I believe that she manages her LinkedIn. I think that's how that social platform goes. And she stated with that link that she's presently employed by the city of Lakewood. So then I sent an email to Mr. Daniels, who was in charge of this, and that is the copy of the email that I gave to everyone, except for Adam Paul, who did not want a copy. And this says that my name is Joan Poston, and I'm interested in this employee. And I did put the link on there, the social media, where she says she is with the city and to the present. And then Mr. Robb, the county clerk, sent an email and said, you know, that she was not employed with the city, and this leads me to be concerned. Are you an ethical person if you're out there on social media representing yourself as being an employee of the city? And Mr. Peterson sent me an email and said, well, yeah, it updates, and it could be, and it could be this, and it could be that. And the truth of the matter is, I believe that Ms. Klein is responsible for her email, and that she is misrepresenting herself. And if you use LinkedIn, a lot of people do use it, to find out backgrounds before they hire people. She has the LinkedIn, and she even has the logo for the city. So I feel like I am trying to get through an ethical process, and I recognize that I am the first person to go through this process, and so there's going to be some glitches and bumps. I did ask for another IEO to be presented to me, and I haven't heard it back about that. I was disappointed with IEO Klein, as because both reports stated they were initial reports, and I was unable to interpret them. The most disappointing was the complaint was dismissed without any investigation. Ms. Klein thought that the five councilwomen being observed going into a meeting room at 6:20, and then being observed coming out 30 minutes later, would not constitute a open records meeting violation. I'd like to remind you that a quorum is three or more gathered, and a meeting is any gathering discussing public business. The exit of the five councilwomen was not a chance meeting. It was from a closed-door area, and it's unlikely such a group concerning coming together prior to the city council meeting were together for 30 minutes and did not discuss any public business. I was invited to a meeting, and that's the reason I was here, because there was a very controversial vote being taken. And the worst of all of this is I am observing a pattern. You need to all understand that we watch. We see how you're voting. We know when you are presenting an amendment, that somebody has created for you, and they sit there and mouth the words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, anybody online wish to speak? Okay, I will close general public comment. I'll also mention that we had two online comments, one pertaining to the discussion regarding for-sale affordable housing and how to, what type of insurance do we have to keep those going in perpetuity? And I think that's something that the team's going to be working on to bring back to council. And the other has to do with Truma BCT, and some of the news that came out, which I will touch on during general business. And certainly, we will make sure that everything that needs to be posted, as far as our postings, will be accurate. So we appreciate that comment. And simply, for those folks who may not be familiar, city council does have an office upstairs, where all the councilors share an office. And so from time to time, certainly you'll have your council members in the same office, and that is in reference to what you just heard. So with that, I'll now ask for the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances are on the agenda only for future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by city council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action. And before we do that, Councilor Matt Guerrero would like to poll item eight.
Yes.
And we'll take eight to general business, and Councilor Janson would like to poll item seven, and we'll move that to general business. With that, will the clerk please read the consent? We might as well just read them minus seven and eight.
Mayor Paul, I move-
Hold on. Let's let him read it into the record real quick.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item six, Resolution 2022-2052, excuse me, 2022-52, appointing a municipal judge, Kelly Easton, to the Lakewood Municipal Court. Item nine, Resolution 2022-55, appointing a member to the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority Board of Commissioners in compliance with Section 3125104 of the Colorado Revise Statutes. Item 10, improving minutes of the city council meetings. City Council Regular Meeting, April 11th, 2022.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of city council minutes and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. And I'll open the public hearing, although nobody signed up to speak on those pertaining. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, so seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we have a motion, a second, and of note, I would just like to welcome Ms. Kelly Easton, who's with us tonight, and she is our new municipal judge. Of course, our new presiding judge, Nicole Bozarth, is also with us. And so I imagine you'll be coming back and joining us for a proper swearing-in celebration, but we're glad you're here. We're thrilled that you've taken an interest in Lakewood, and look forward to seeing your future with our community, and certainly bringing a lot of energy to the bench. So thank you. Okay, seeing no lights on, please cast your votes. And that passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. All right. Okay, will the clerk please read item 11 into the record?
Item 11, Resolution 2022-56, recognizing the outstanding service of city manager Kathleen Hodson, and authorizing a performance award and acknowledgement thereof.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on this item. Anybody in chambers wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Anybody online wish to speak on this item? And I will note that there were eight responses on Lakewood speaks. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I will ask for a motion to move the discussion forward.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-56.
Second.
Okay, and just to set the table for those who are engaged, the city council hires three individuals, one being our city attorney, our city manager, and our two judges. And so every year, we have a review, and this year, that review took place in executive session, and there was a consensus to move forward the discussion tonight related to a merit bonus. And as this is a personal issue, if people want to engage deeper, there is the opportunity to go into executive session. You will see that the amount is left blank because there was some different discussion- as to what that would be. So we have a motion, a second. Councilor Abel, your light is on.
Thank you, Mayor. A long-time observer of Lakewood City Council, I find this to be a highly unusual process. In the past, the city manager's salary and bonus issues were handled in executive session as we discussed her evaluation. I understand that we decided to bring this forward as a resolution, but I was quite surprised that it was, that we were bringing this forward. I was quite surprised that it would be held in a public meeting. The issue at hand is obviously a personnel matter. And personnel matters are to remain confidential. I understand there is a provision that allows the person in question to waive the confidentiality, but I've seen no waiver of such. Because my decision on this matter would involve such protected information, I cannot, and I cannot explain why I would vote the way I'm going to vote. For that reason and some others, I will oppose this measure.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, all bonuses have to go before the city council, so I believe the last one did go for council.
May I follow up on that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, they do. They have to come to us as a final product. And if we give the city manager salary increase, that comes to us as well. And we vote on those individual things. But in this situation, we can't really discuss the pros and cons of giving a bonus to the manager because it involves personnel issues. And personnel issues are supposed to be confidential. So thanks a lot, Mayor. I was talking about a different issue than, oh, well, we had all discussed this, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, do we have a sitting motion as far as, yeah, so is there an amended motion to amend the ordinance? Or not the ordinance, the resolution with an amount? Counselor Janson?
Thank you. I think Kathy is a very nice person. She's very warm and congenial. But I'm making a business decision as an elected representative. In making this decision, I look at the performance, status of public safety, the economy, and the salary that is quite generous, along with added benefits. I cannot vote for any bonus. I think we should be transparent and post the contract salary and total compensation package for the public. The people elected us, shouldn't we show them the details?
Great. Thank you. And I would also mention that there's a separate discussion that will continue to take place as for the city manager's contract moving forward, which again was directed to the mayor pro tem and I to begin that discussion. That'll come back to city council at a different date. Okay. So we have a blank resolution. Is there an amount or no amount? And then we would just vote no? Counselor Sharazai?
I would oppose a motion to amend this, to add an amount, and then let's have that vote and people can vote the way that they feel comfortable tonight. But I would amend that in section number two, that we list the amount of $10,000, which is part of what we had. This is, okay.
Okay, is there a second on the amendment? Okay, there's a motion, a second. I have Counselor Franks and Stewart's lights on. Do you want to speak to the amendments?
I do. I just think that my recollection was in, historically, it came with a filled-in amount based on coming out of the executive session. And I just think that is a, it's more transparent to the public and certainly doesn't, like Counselor Abel had said, we certainly need to be very respectful. This is a personnel matter. So I would just caution in the future that that, the direction that comes out of that session should be what appears here and then we don't have to go through this. But thank you.
Yep, well said. Okay, we have a motion, a second on the $10,000 amendment. Please cast your votes. And that passes seven ayes, three nays, the nays being Abel, Janson, and Oliver. Okay, Madam Pro Tem, will you make a motion as amended?
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-56 as amended.
Okay, motion and a second on the amendment. Okay. All right, we're going to clear this. Counselor Oliver.
Okay, thanks a lot. I would like to follow up on Counselor Abel's remarks. And this is confusing to me, too, because we're voting on a bonus, which means that we love what she's doing, but at the same time, we can't talk about what she's doing. Is that correct? It sounds like, I mean, are we able now to discuss what we think about the job she's been doing? I don't, it sounds like we are, but we aren't. I guess we should ask the city attorney that.
So we can certainly seek an answer to that. And I would also mention that a report was delivered to city council that the evaluation was built off of, which brought forth tonight's discussion. Duly noted that in the past, we have had a number. And coming out of that meeting, we hadn't had a number because we were waiting on other information from other communities as to bonuses in the field. Ms. McKinney Brown, if you'd like to answer.
Yes, so coming to a consensus at the time that you're discussing her annual performance review is certainly a legal and practical manner of handling this. And discussing in public a specific amount, now that everybody apparently is in possession of whatever that last piece of information is, that's fine, too. Typically, critiquing an individual, an employee, happens in executive session. At this point, I assume, I was not present, that the critiquing already occurred. The positives and negatives were stated to the individual during an executive session. And based on the critique, the individual is already aware of the critique. At this point, it sounds to me like you're just making the final decision of whether or not to award a bonus and if you should award a bonus, what that amount is. When monies are being expended by the city, that does happen in the public's eye, unless they are otherwise contracted not to.
I'm still going. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you on that. So we can talk about a bonus, but we shouldn't talk about why she might or might not deserve a bonus. But we could talk about the bonus maybe in terms of her contract. What I want to ask is, I have a couple of questions, okay? When is the city manager's contract up is one question, which was actually relayed in that executive session, which I listened to on Friday and today. And also, I believe her contract is up in December. Can we say that out loud? I mean, it's-
Yeah, public now. Her contract is public record.
Okay, great. So right now, we're talking about giving her a bonus for this year, but we're also looking down the road and we're not talking about it tonight. But we will be talking about this real soon, about renegotiating a contract extension with her, correct? I mean, that sounds reasonable.
That is correct.
Yeah. And so I would think that we should be discussing this bonus in terms of future contracts with her. And in fact, my whole point here is that we're just handing her a bunch of money right now and we should be doing this as a retention, as part of a retention, if council wants to retain her, if she wants to come back. There is a couple of scenarios that I see where perhaps she doesn't want to continue here after this year. She's already, she's going to be at the end of 14 years and people do move on. So if we approve this bonus right now, we could be just wasting city money, when I think we should roll whatever we're talking about right here into the conversation about a retention bonus down the road, which is actually only a couple of months away. So that's why I'm against this, the idea of handing out a bonus right now, is that it shouldn't be now. We're putting basically all of our cards on the table, saying, oh, we love you, you've done such a great job. And that's actually going to make it worse for us to retain her, if that's what we really want to do. Because we're saying, hey, we love you so much that we're going to just hand you a bunch of money right now, $10,000 is what we've decided on now. And then other cities who are looking for city managers or private enterprises who are looking for a manager, see that and they are going to go, wow, she's awesome. Let's double our efforts to hire her away from Lakewood. And then when we get into this actual retention negotiation in a couple of months, we're going to have a tougher time of it. So I think this whole bonus idea right now is counterproductive in that, well, I just explained it. And so I think it's a bad idea to do this right now. If you want to give more money, then it should be part of that retention bonus or part of the next contract. And just throwing it out right now, I think it's just a bad idea for a number of reasons, which I just laid out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I was also not able to attend the executive session. I understand, Counselor Oliver, that you were also not present. Is that correct? Seems like these are all things that would have been better for everybody to be able to consider in that moment. And so recognizing that I was also not there, I was given other ways to give my feedback ahead of time. And a piece of being able to do this work is being present. And unfortunately, my job that pays the majority of my bills, my day job, interfered with my ability to be there and I wasn't. And that's unfortunate that I wasn't able to be a part of that conversation. But I do have some bit of trust that there was good, hearty, robust discussion in that and also got to listen to the recording of it. And I, you know, I also just have to say, in my experience, I've never had an increase in wage make me quit.
Yeah, can I get confirmation on that her salary is nearly $280,000 plus benefits?
That is accurate.
Thank you.
Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. In one of the previous discussions about tonight's agenda, you mentioned the input from the public on Lakewood Speaks. You neglected to do that in this case. So would you address the Lakewood Speaks comments, that there at least were some? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Counselor Sharazai?
Yes, thank you. I would just, I know that this is a tricky situation and so folks are asking for clarity on salaries for this position, but this is right-sized for this position across municipalities. We were given that information, it's public record. City in comparable size, Fort Collins, for example, just hired a brand-new city manager at a rate that was $15,000 higher than our own. I think the idea that by giving a bonus, we're letting the word out about Ms. Hodson and the community is outside of the realm of possibility, given that she's been in this role for 14 years. She's looked at as an expert in this position. She sits and holds a lot of positions within the community. She was recently the chair of the Denver Botanic Gardens, for example. Like, she's a regional force. And I think that she has done the work to necessitate us showing value in that. And so that's really what this conversation is about. It's really not a lesson for councilors on how we negotiate in the future. We're talking right now about this particular bonus in response to the work that she's done. And I think that we laid out a pretty valuable process in that. There was a written survey that folks could participate in if they had chose to. And there was also an executive session where we could have had this conversation as we treat all personnel issues in confidence, so that there wasn't the misinformation that circulates in the community about this. We've tried to be completely transparent about how this process is unfolding. I think it's unfortunate when people mischaracterize that because it's continuing to breed mistrust in the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Janson?
And thank you for, yeah, she does a lot of, a good, she does a lot of good things. And, you know, I really like her. She's a nice person, really congenial. But the fact is, there are so many, I get emails every day, I get phone calls every day of problems that people are having and they can't seem to get an answer from the city. Their stock cars are stolen. I mean, I was on a job and somebody said, oh, yeah, my car was stolen. Where do you live? Lakewood. It's like, you know, the crime has just gotten worse and I just, I don't know what to do. I mean, it's like she's the city manager, why isn't, why isn't public safety one of our number-one priorities? And it doesn't seem to be. That's where I'm at with, and a lot of my constituents do not want her to have a bonus and I'm just going to stick with them.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, a second on the amended, which states $10,000. I ask that you please cast your votes. That passes seven ayes, three nays, nays being Abel, Janson, Oliver. Okay, will the clerk please read item 12 into the record?
Item 12, vacating a portion of right-of-way located east of Lot 4, Block 18 of Applewood Glen, first addition.
Okay, if you remember, I'll now open the public hearing. If you remember, there was a discussion or a first reading on this, a staff presentation on Lakewood Speaks, as well as, I think, two comments, not just one comment. And the property owners are with us here again tonight. So does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I will, would you like to speak?
I don't have to.
So we do have two. Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate you coming back for another meeting as well. So with that said, I will entertain a motion in a second, please, on ordinance 2022-14.
Mayor Paul, I move for adoption of ordinance 02022-14.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Counselor Oliver?
Yes, I have no problem with vacating that land. Your land. It looks like it goes through your front yard. I do have one question for the city, though, is that it seems like, and it's just because I'm new, it seems like it was, it seems like a pretty straightforward method of vacating something and writing wrong, so to speak. But when we had the whole St. Jude kerfuffle, kerfuffle, I said that wrong, I apologize. It was a big, it was a heavy lift. And I was just wondering, wouldn't it been easy to have done that with St. Jude's also? So I'm not talking, I'm voting for your thing, so don't worry. But is anybody-
I think the difference, the conundrum with St. Jude's is it was parkland and purchased with certain dollars. So there are more issues related to the purchase of that land, whereas this seems to be private property and city land not purchased with park dollars. I'm getting a yes. So that's the difference.
Thank you. That's what I thought it was, but I wanted somebody to say that out loud here, just in case.
Great, thank you. Counselor Abel?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that from the packet information we got- I just wanted to note that from the packet information we got and the very clever picture, it looks like these folks have been maintaining our right-of-way since 1959 and haven't billed us for a penny of it. So thank you. And I will be voting for this.
Great. And they sat through two council meetings. So, all right, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Very nice, passes 10 ayes, zero nays, thank you very much. Thank you to staff too. Remember, I told you, we're here every Monday. Okay, we will now go back to the consent agenda under general business. Will the clerk please read item 7 into the record?
Item 7, resolution 2022-53, approving a mutual non-disclosure agreement governing confidential settlement discussions regarding streetlights.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing on this resolution and there was a comment also on Lakewood Speaks. I will mention again, for the community, we understand these things can, you know, set up a red flag. And unfortunately, we're dealing with a utility in the Public Utilities Commission and a process that's laid out. However, as these things move forward, more information will certainly become available. So Counselor Jansen, you pulled this?
Oh, yes, I did.
Please.
Thank you. I just want to know what the urgency, I had some questions, what the urgency of this resolution is? And do we really need the government owning streetlights? And would amending the contract be more cost effective?
So Mr. Goldstein, do you?
Yes, please.
Good evening, nice to see you.
Hi there, hi, Mayor and Council. So I think we need this non-disclosure agreement so we can have those conversations with Excel. Excel has said, before we enter into any conversations, whether it's an acquisition or anything else, that we need to sign a non-disclosure agreement. So we don't know what money we might be leaving on the table or what might be the best deal for city council's consideration without first signing this non-disclosure agreement so we can begin that analysis.
Okay, I guess, I guess I just wondered what brought up this, why are, why are we buying the streetlights?
Several years ago, many community groups were able to successfully get two new streetlight rates, entered into the PUC, an energy-only streetlight rate and a metered streetlight rate. Those rates are around $3 maybe for a streetlight versus the $20 we're paying right now. So we think there's a high potential for savings. That all depends on total acquisition cost and ongoing maintenance and a whole lot of other factors that we'd need to find out through discovery. But there's certainly a potential out there for savings and to be the best steward of the taxpayer dollar, we felt it would, you know, be fiduciary of us to at least evaluate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jansen. And just, so this was started with a previous council, you know, just for history. And so that's where the ball started rolling was with the previous council and we've gotten to where we are tonight. Yep. Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. McKinney Brown, there was some concern online on Lakewood Speaks that folks were questioning whether they would ever know what kind of money we're spending on this and that sort of thing. I believe when we started these, or when we wrapped up these discussions, I asked you that question and you said that it would be available eventually or?
All expenditures of the city are public. And this would be an expenditure of the city. So based on the negotiation period that other cities have entered into, we're not looking at something in the next few months. This could be a couple of years out before we negotiate. And again, there's the potential for amazing savings to the city, but we need to know for sure before we bring this back. Once we have an idea of these dollars, of course, the city council is going to have to make that decision. And I anticipate much of this is going to be budgetary decisions. It's going to have to be approved within a budget. So expenditures of city monies aren't private things. They happen through the budgeting process and through the public process.
So the information these folks were wanting to see will be available to them when we finally spend the money.
Absolutely, it has to be.
And we will account for that. Thank you very much.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, we're the ones that went to Excel and we said, we'd like to buy the streetlights that you own. And they're saying, hey, we'll sell them to you for a price. And that's where we are right now. Or are they resisting and we're using some legal eminent domain, whatever, something similar to that to say, well, you know, you have to send, you have to sell them to us?
I can speak to that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, please.
So yes, we did initiate the conversation with Excel, as I stated for Councilmember Jansen, that based on the potential savings from energy-only and metered streetlight rates, as well as some other factors, that's, that's something we thought would be at least good for staff to evaluate and then bring that back to council. So we initiated the conversation. That was initiated through council action, not the seated council, but the previous one, because per our franchise agreement with Excel, we have to buy, provide one-year notice through a letter of intent. So we did that. And then in order to begin any sort of negotiation or evaluation process, Excel has requested that the city enter into a mutual non-disclosure agreement, so it would protect the city as well, although we don't think there's really any upside for that for us because we're an open and public entity. But Excel is requesting the non-disclosure agreement to even have any discussion. So we haven't gotten to the negotiation phase, as you said. This is the first step in that process.
What percentage of our streetlights do we own now? Because we do own some of them right now, don't we?
It's a fractional percentage. I don't know the exact percent, I would guess under 5%. We have about 8,000 streetlights and maybe you own a few hundred of them.
Great. Is there anything else? I mean, most people think that Lakewood owns our streetlights and we own our red lights and we own the streets. Is there anything else out there along these lines that we don't actually own that, that somebody like utilities owns or something else like that? Can you think of something? I was thinking of manhole covers. I was talking about that to our traffic engineer this week. And I'm thinking that, that Lakewood doesn't actually own manhole covers, but I'm asking, is there more to it out there?
I'm, I guess I don't really know how to answer that. There's probably, and there's lots of things we don't own. We have 21 different water utilities, I believe 25 different sanitary sewer utilities. So there's tons of infrastructure out there in the right-of-way or privately held infrastructure that the city doesn't own. You know, Excel has gas lines and electric power line. I mean, so I guess I don't know that there's a limit to your question.
Right. Well, it was just a surprise to find out that we didn't own our own streetlights. That was a surprise to me. And I'm sure if it was a surprise to me, it was a surprise to other people too.
We certainly pay for them, energy and maintenance. So if a streetlight gets knocked down, Lakewood taxpayers pay to put it back up. We just pay Excel to do that right now.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Abel, and then.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Goldstein, I just wanted to clarify, it sounded like you said, we approached Excel when indeed, gosh, six, seven years ago, Excel was trying to persuade folks to purchase the streetlights and such. So they came, they came to the municipalities first and we had a long period in which we were rather dubious of its benefit to the city to buy these things. So I just wanted to clarify that they, they put these, they've approached a lot of other municipalities as well as us. And then we looked at it very carefully for a number of years before we took them up on their offer. Is that correct?
Well, I was not with the city at that time, so I don't know that I can speak to those specifics, but I had been working on similar measures in other cities around that timeframe. Perhaps Excel, what you're recalling is Excel approached cities with a LED rate. So it wasn't really an acquisition, it was a conversion to LED. I will say, from what we've observed with other cities' acquisition of their streetlights, it wouldn't appear that Excel was very eager to sell that asset. Ms. McKinney Brown alluded to this a little bit in the length of time it's taken. And those negotiations have been difficult for other municipalities. So I, I would not categorize it as Excel being eager to sell or divest the assets.
Well, all I know is that Preston Gibson approached us in, gosh, 2015, 2016 at the CML convention and brought this up. So it really doesn't matter how I got started, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't go out and say, hey, Excel, let us buy your streetlight system. And we will also inherit some streetlight standards poles that are in bad need of maintenance, is that correct?
If, if the city were to pursue acquisition, then yes, we would take many assets that are in need of repair. You know, some would be perfectly fine, some would, you know, be, as the city would categorize it, fully depreciated. So a very old streetlight pole. Excel might not categorize it that way, but I think you all probably would as well. And the thing is, we pay for that maintenance anyways right now. So, you know, all the corroded poles out there, we're paying to replace them and maintain them anyways. We're just paying Excel to do that work rather than picking our own contractor.
Thank you.
Okay, motion and a second, please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of resolution 7 as read into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
So let's just clarify, item 7 is resolution 2022-53? Thank you. Just a quick comment, and so this is again, this, you know, part of a long journey that can result in a good opportunity for the city or not. However, we just don't know that. And not only does this help with some of our sustainability type standards or what type of light or energy savings we can have, but we also struggle with Excel fixing lights and replacing lights. I think everybody on the dais knows that that can be certainly a long challenge. So there'll be plenty more to come and pretty fair to say I won't be here for the rest of that, so good luck to everybody. Please cast your votes. Counselor Sharzai. Can you push it again? No, you're not speaking. All right, that passes 10 ayes, zero nays, thank you. Okay, will the clerk please reread item? Eight into the record.
Item 8, resolution 2022-54, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District for the provision of law enforcement services.
Okay. I will open the public hearing on this resolution. There were a few comments on Lakewood Speaks and nobody has wished to sign up. And I'll turn it over to Counselor Mayaguerro, who has to have this vote.
Thank you. And thank you so much for being with us to answer some questions here. Basically, I think that, you know, thinking about community safety within RTD, both within Lakewood and elsewhere, I know is definitely something that's on a lot of folks' minds in war II. And I have gotten a lot of questions, not about this resolution really specifically, but really broadly, and this, some of that seemed to touch here. So I just wanted to make sure that I had really good clarity on this topic. And then I believe that Counselor Jansen also had some additional questions about this. So appreciate you sticking with us here. So my first question is really just, you know, I know that it says in, in the packet here about that we used to have this kind of contract with RTD and we stopped doing that with COVID. But if you could just sort of outline to me, right, I understand that RTD would pay these agents, but is this something that's focusing on like the full RTD system? Is it more Lakewood specific? And is there any attention specifically to security at RTD stations? I know in particular, I've been getting a lot of calls about the Wadsworth and Sheridan stations for the light rail.
Just real quick, can we, let's do a quick introduction, our interim police chief, Ed Lor is with us tonight.
Yes, Ed Lor, interim chief of police, and then to the right of me is senior police legal advisor, Pat Freeman.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Yes, so this, this was a practice that we had been involved in several years prior to COVID. What it involves is Lakewood police officers or agents being both on the light rail as well as the light rail line, that is, the properties, the platforms, everything that RTD owns within the city of Lakewood.
Are you on?
Going outside of the city and forcing anything.
There you go.
And we will be working only within the city limits. We put officers on the light rail, helping with fair enforcement. They also look for other violations, which they have, they usually find plenty of those too. They get off on the platforms looking for violations. And then we also have a pair of officers that will ride along and parallel them in a marked unit in case they make arrests, in case there's more assistance needed. They're just sort of a backup to those two primary officers. So at any given time, you'll have four officers working that assignment.
Great, thank you so much. I mean, that's, I had like follow-up questions, but you actually got to all of that, a whole bucket of line of, line of questioning. And then the other sort of point of question or concern that I had is really around, you know, there is some understaffing, right? Like we do not have 100% of our agent positions currently filled. I just, recognizing that there were some comments and I got some emails about that that's, you know, because of the budget, that that's not true. So I just wanted that also to be clear, that it's not that we're, we, the city has not like restricted you all from hiring, but I just wanted to, which was a part of a different conversation. But I got those questions about this and I know that that's not the case here because RTD will be paying for it. But is it potentially a problem for issues of staffing, agents that are already overworked or exhausted? Do you foresee any, any issues of that nature?
No, I don't see that as an issue, Counselor, because this is more of a voluntary program. Quite honestly, I think it was a pretty well-sought-after program. It's kind of exciting, they get a chance to kind of mingle with the patrons on the light rail. And they get a chance to really make a difference in a, you know, real direct way. I think their efforts are noted and they make a difference, both for passengers as well as people and around the platforms and so forth. So I think this, if people are tired, they won't be signing up for this sort of, this sort of assignment. But it is, it is a well-sought-after and a popular program that I'm sure there'll be plenty of interest.
Great, thank you so much. And then just the last question is, will agents receive any like additional training in terms of how to deal with the types of conflict that they might encounter at stations or on, you know, RTD buses or light rails? And does that include things like de-escalation and like trying to resolve things as non-violently as possible?
Yes, I mean, they'll act in the professional manner that we've all become accustomed to over these years. RTD's training will mostly focus around the enforcement aspect of things, the fair violations, everything else that RTD wants, there'll be additional testing of the agents, drug and alcohol testing, they'll. They'll, because it's a federally funded program, there's a lot of other criteria that they have to go through in terms of training and requirements. But these cops know what they're doing, and they'll do just fine with de-escalation and handling things at the lowest level, but they'll do their job.
Great, thank you. I think that's all for me for now, but I'm sure others have questions.
Okay. Mayor Protan Vincent?
Yes, I will say I was so glad to see this on the agenda. We have had many complaints, and it was a wonderful program. I do need to let people know, one, that the Sheridan station is in Denver, so there won't be anything on that. When you board, the first one you board is Lamar. And if any of you have ever been on there when they do their thing, it's pretty amazing. I mean, you're sitting there, and all of a sudden, two people will jump up and go, "Lakewood Police, show your fares." And I'm like, "Oh, they got them," because I could see people jumping on without paying a fare. That was kind of fun. But you're also not, sorry. You're also not supposed to acknowledge that you know them. And that was, for me personally, very difficult, and for a lot of people in the neighborhood, too, because they knew who these officers were, you know, so to try to pretend like you didn't. Until they said, "Hey, Counselor Vincent, how are you doing? Hey, Maddie, how are you doing? Hey, Kathy, how are you doing?" So I can't tell you how supportive I am of this. I think it will solve a lot. It was a great program when it was implemented, and I think you stopped right before COVID. So from the neighborhood, I know I've gotten a lot of emails saying, "Thank you, finally." And I think we've got three or four support ones on the IGA, too. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Just a reminder, it's fare-free August, so you won't be paying a fare until September.
Yeah, and just in addition to that, this will dovetail nicely with the already existing enforcement actions that we're doing along the platforms. 13th and Wadsworth was brought up, and Lamar. We're out there weekly now doing enforcement actions, undercover operations, putting narcotics officers out there, and we're making a lot of arrests. So we're making our presence known, we're making it known to the criminals that maybe they should go somewhere else, and that's the whole idea, right?
Right.
All right. Okay, so I have Counselor Sherezadeh, Counselor Janson, and Counselor Olver.
Yes, thank you. This may be a question for Mr. Goldstein, but recently in Award One meeting, we had a discussion that Lakewood police agents were also serving a security duty for Colorado Christian University. And so seeing this come up on the agenda, you know, how many sort of contracts exist like that is something that I'm curious about, and I know others in my ward are curious about. How much outside of Lakewood police time do they spend adding security to the community?
I think Chief Lor is probably best able to answer that.
So Chief Lor, if you have an answer, if not, you certainly get back to us.
I'd have to give back the exact numbers. There are a few businesses that we do extra duty at. We have strict guidelines as to what businesses they can be at and conflicts of interest and so forth. But I can get you the exact number of locations that we do it and how many hours we provide to them.
Yeah, that would be great to have a better understanding.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Janson?
Okay, thank you. So I have a question in 2.3, Agents as Independent Contractors. In that, in that sentence, or in this paragraph, it says, "The city or agents will pay when due all applicable federal and state taxes, contributions for social security, unemployment insurance, income withholding tax, and other taxes and measures by wages paid." However, when you're an independent contractor, you have to, you do a 1099. You get a 1099, and you pay your own taxes. So why is this sentence in here? I just wondered, because I wonder if that's going to be controversial with the budget? Because it says it's budget-free, and I'm kind of worried that that sentence is kind of screwing that. And I have a couple more questions, too.
I can answer that one. So I had the same concerns when I started looking at this contract, and so I actually did some, a little bit of digging into this exact area. It's my understanding that the city essentially bakes into the price that we set for this some of those tax offsets and the offsets for benefits and those sorts of things into that cost. And we pull that out of the paycheck, and the reason that they're independent contractors but are getting paid through their Lakewood police, you know, hourly rate and so forth. So as a result of it kind of being, they're independent contractors, kind of loaned out to RTD by the city of Lakewood and the Lakewood Police Department. And so the understanding that it is, is that we withhold some of the money within that hourly rate to make sure that we still are covering the taxes, the benefits packages, those sorts of things that our individual agents get.
But, so I hire independent contractors, and I just give them a 1099, and they just keep track of that themselves. They have to pay their own taxes. So is Lakewood going to be paying extra taxes on this? I'm, sorry, I'm a little confused on this.
No, Lakewood's not paying any extra taxes on this. The individual agents are going to be paying the taxes. However, it's going to be coming out of their checks. But the checks are basically, they're getting money in two different ways. They're getting money from their normal salary for their job that they do, and then they're also getting this extra duty.
Okay.
But it's all coming through the one check stream.
Okay.
So they're basically have baked into the price, pulling some money out to make sure that we're covering any additional costs so that, you know, because we have to like contribute to retirement and those sorts of things. And so that's, they've figured out what in that salary, or what in this hourly rate is there, and they pull some of that money out and then give that to the retirement fund or, you know, those sorts of things so that they cover this.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that our guys, our officers are going to be compensating in case anybody's injured, workman's comp is paid by Lakewood?
Yeah, and so that's another part of the reason why, you know, there's some withholding within the hourly rate there, is that the reason being that, you know, obviously, insurance, those sorts of workers' comp, it's all covered by the city of Lakewood, because they are acting still as a police agent for the city of Lakewood. They're in their Lakewood uniform and doing all of that. It's just the person who's paying the salary is this $59 from RTD.
So I have a question, because Counselor Vincent said that they weren't in their uniform? Or are they doing it in the uniform now?
I think it depends on the situation. There, I think there are some times where plainclothes is called for, whereas there is other times where, obviously, as, you know, Chief Lor just mentioned, if, you know, you're going to have the two cars riding in tandem, they will be in uniform in their marked patrol car. So it's kind of dependent upon what aspect of their duty they are being asked to do in that scenario.
And another thing on the duty, I noticed that the fare enforcement was bold. I just, I'm concerned about our officer's safety, and would the fare enforcement be a distraction when a public safety number is our number-one complaint on the train? That's, and I'm concerned that something might happen where they're looking at somebody's fare, and I did talk to the chief about this, too. I was concerned about, you know, they're looking at somebody's fare, and then something happens, and there's a distraction, and somebody ends up getting hurt.
You know, I'll answer that.
Okay.
I got this down now. I'll answer that, too. First of all, thank you for caring and asking that safety question. Yes, they'll work in tandem, they don't work solo, and your backup officer is designed to do just that. He's there or she's there to watch your back. I think RTD, and I appreciate the concept, they're looking at this kind of a broken windows-type situation. The fare enforcement is the very lowest level of enforcement that we're looking at on the RTD. But these are the folks that commit the vast majority of our crimes. It isn't your law-abiding people that are paying their wages through or their fares. So I think tackling and going after the fares are going to reap us more benefit for the overall public safety that you speak of.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
And thank you again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have Counselor Olver, then Counselor Sherezadeh.
Okay, thanks. I think Counselor Janson just asked almost all my questions, but something you just said bothers me. I like this idea, I'm going to vote for it. But I don't love the idea of the fare of our police officers. First of all, they're going to be in Lakewood uniform. They're not going to change into RTD uniforms or something like that, right?
So, yeah, the officers on the RTD are usually in plainclothes, and then the officers that parallel them in a marked unit are in uniform.
Okay. Are they, are we going to have like two Lakewood officers? Or are we going to have one Lakewood and one RTD officer working together?
Both Lakewood officers.
Both Lakewood officers. Yeah, and I've ride light rail all the time. I go down to Metro, or I used to go downtown and work. And not all the fare jumpers are early criminals. I'll give you an example. It's like, you know, you run to get the train, and you don't have time to hit the validation or something like that, because the doors are closing. So maybe somebody up here on the dais has jumped on a train without a valid thing. And so I would hesitate to say all fare jumpers are bad people. And they're going to commit all sorts of crimes. But my point is more that I'd love to see Lakewood officers be looked at by the passengers as somebody who's there for their benefit. And that when they see a Lakewood officer, well, they won't, because they're in plainclothes. But if they did, I'd love to have the mental attitude be, "Yes, somebody's here. Somebody gets out of hand behind me. There's actually somebody here that's going to take care of it." As opposed to the passengers looking at places with Lakewood officers coming out, or agents, sorry, coming on and being the people that go, "Well, you better sit up straight. You better have your ticket out." And I don't love that idea. Truthfully, and I think I explained why.
Sure.
But I'd rather see people look forward to our officers getting on the train than look going, "Oh, jeez, I didn't get my validation. I better jump off," or something like that.
So I appreciate that, Counselor. We've always got this one tool in our tool belt that we use quite a bit, and it's called discretion. And I was, I wasn't not paying attention, I was trying to look where the wording was in the contract. But we do have not only access to giving citations, but also warnings. And that discretion could just be, "I get it, you couldn't get on the train quick enough. You've missed the validation, just get it validated next time you get off." I think you'll find that our cops are probably more forgiving and more understanding of citizenry. And I think you'll see that professional courtesy and that professional service, whether it be plainclothes or uniform. All right, thank you.
Counselor Sherezadeh, then Counselor McCarrero.
Yes, thank you. I have a comment and a question. I think if we have issues with the contract, that would be for us to share during public comment with RTD, because this is their contract and what they're asking our police agents to do. So I would encourage folks to add their voice to that. And then my second question is just, does this have an impact to our Tabor income? So this is some increase to policing here. I don't understand Tabor well enough to ask more than that, so.
Good question.
No.
Okay, Ms. Mayat Guerrero, and then I entertain a motion.
Yeah, I think, do we have, do we have any data that people not paying fares are more likely to be committing other petty offenses? I share the concern with Counselor Olver that even that sentiment feels dangerous to me. I think the times when I have not paid my fare on the light rail, what's the term limit on that, or the statute of limitations, hopefully over at this point? But, you know, when I first, when I first moved to Denver, and I was working many jobs, and I lived right off the light rail in a terrible messed-up house that's not there anymore. But I, you know, legitimately often did not have the $5, and I briefly worked in Lafayette and would take the, you know, a flatiron flyer all the way to Lafayette and back, and had, you know, like was definitely in the habit of having to scrounge together change. And so I just want to recognize that there's a huge amount of people who, you know, for whom transportation, well, as a fact, for the majority of people in Colorado, transportation is the number-two cost in, for a living. So it goes with like rent or housing, right? So whatever you're paying for for housing, then the next thing is transportation. And RTD fares are free this August, and I think it's a great experiment, and I hope that we see an increase in ridership. But I am wondering if you could just talk a little bit more to sort of like that component of this being such a big focus. It just, it feels, I think Counselor Janson also said something along the lines of like, right, that what we're really looking for is these other, these other issues, these things that are making people unsafe. And so I just, I really do feel quite concerned about that sentiment.
You know, once again, we're working for RTD, and this is a focus for them. I think it's kind of that baseline crime that they deal with all the time. Anecdotally, I can only tell you that our officers get into a lot more issues on the light rail other than fares. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of criminal activity in and around. So I don't, or I can't give you hard facts, Counselor, I apologize that I didn't come with that. But this is just kind of the beginning of what they deal with out there. And whether or not they write a ticket to Mr. Olver's question, that's a discretionary thing. A lot of times, what these officers will do is just make sure this person's not wanted for crimes, something like that, and then they just move on. There are uneventful nights and uneventful days that they work the light rail and everything's fine. But I'm sure glad they're out there. And so that's the whole focus of this particular agreement, is to put them out there. Did I help you with that answer?
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Janson?
This is just a follow-up to Sophia. It made me think about something. So is the reason why they're plainclothes and they are off-duty, is it because, is it an entrapment issue?
No, as a matter of fact, I think the fact that they're plainclothes allows passengers to freely do what they would do.
Okay.
So I think it's more of just to detect criminal activity. It's the same reason we send plainclothes undercover and narcotics detectives up on the platforms, because people are just being free at what they do, and these are the things that our citizens see. And so we need to be at that same level as they are, detecting crime, preventing crime, and apprehending those that are committing it around us.
Okay, great, thank you.
But no entrapment, I guarantee you, no entrapment.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have a motion for Resolution 2022-54?
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-54 as introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. I'll just say that I am certainly in support of this. This program was meaningful, and I think the key is discretion, and that's something that is important. This is something a lot of communities are grappling with. The metro mayors have been in contact with RTD, and RTD's really reached out to us also to ask for our help. Low-level fare offenses is certainly not something that we want to be going after. But as you all know, there's been some pretty erratic behavior, not only on the line, but also in the stations, as evidenced by some of ours as well as Union Station. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and I'm happy to support it. Please cast your votes. Counselor Mayat Guerrero? Thank you. Passes 10 ayes, 0 nays. Okay, thank you both. Chief, thank you. Mr. Freeman, thank you very much. And please thank Commander Alish. I still see him out there hanging out. You know, we just got trained about people like him standing outside of chambers. I will, before I have one general business item, but I would like to just acknowledge it looks like we have two youth members with us tonight. So thank you for coming out and enjoying, hopefully enjoying counsel. I see a smile, so he must be enjoying it. Okay, so in general biz, or in public comment, there was a mention about Turumo, and I think you've all seen it based upon an August 3rd press release that deals with ethylene oxide pollution. And just want to make sure that the community knows that the EPA, Colorado Department of Health and Environment, are going to start to host some forums. You can go to www.epa.gov/eto to get more information. That's going to be probably the best way to engage with this situation, and we'll certainly support all of their efforts. support all of their efforts. And then of note, there was a meeting scheduled for October 25th, but that has changed to September 22nd. And that'll be the one that's hosted by the EPA. We'll make sure that all the council has this. We'll also make sure that this is on the website as this is of great interest. And certainly, I, I think in previous conversations, Terumo's open to speaking with the council as well. So just wanted to make note of that. Anything else under general business? Counselor Jansen.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know I'm in the, looking at Lakewood. I'm, I'm having a neighborhood crime forum on Sunday, September 25th from 2:00 to 3:30. And I just think it's time for Lakewood community to have a discussion so we can determine achievable goals and action plans to decelerate the crime rates. And that's about it. Thanks.
Okay, so just real quick, are we doing not announcements right now, but general business? Okay, Counselor Olver.
Yes, I wanted to bring up something, but I'm not gonna make a motion tonight. But I thought, I thought I'd start us off and start us thinking about this for down the road. As, as we have a problem, I believe, it's how fast we get rid of our recordings. The state law is they must keep them for 90 days, but we are deleting them at 91 days. An example, two examples. The executive committee meeting that we had for talking about the reviewing of the city manager was actually five, no, three months and a day ago. So tomorrow, or the next day, whenever they get to it, they're going to delete that recording. Now, I think that's wrong. I think that we are going to be talking about salary redoing, talking about her contract, how much we're willing to pay, that kind of things down the road within just a few months. And most of what was said at that meeting is germane to what, what's coming up. And so something like that, I would actually formally like request the city clerk to not delete that right away. I don't know if I can do that, but I'm going to say that out loud here today because there could very well be all of us, none of us, one of us, 10 of us, who wants to go back and review what was said back in early May. I think it was May 9th? Yeah, May 9th, so tomorrow. And that, that has happened previously too, just for us, the new people, the IGA with Morrison. We discussed that in April, and then we voted on it after 90 days had passed. So that one should have been deleted also. And so I think we need to start thinking about changing these rules a little bit up here. And I'm not gonna propose anything today, but I just want to give you a heads up that this is gonna come down, and it's something I think we should be thinking of, not just for the 90 days. Think about how long we should actually keep things. Because we know that there's a number of new people up here today. And if you just look at the makeup of council, there's going to be a number of new people up here in, in two years. And wouldn't it be nice if they were able to look at what we did here, not just in this meeting, but in executive meetings, so they, they know what they're voting on? So anyway, that's, that's, I'm gonna bring that up down the road, probably not too far away. Thanks.
Just for clarification, if you weren't part of that meeting or part of the body, you wouldn't be able to participate in that recording, correct? So a future council could not listen in onto an executive session that this council had, correct?
That's, that's the way it is right now, but we can change that because we are the body. We are council, and we can make changes to that rule. I believe you're correct. I believe that is the way it is right now. But it's possible that we want to change that, and it's possible we don't. But I think it should be discussed. But I'm correct that this council can change that rule, right?
I believe so, yes. However, your request to the city clerk, I should clarify that without approval of, of the body, he must continue to follow the open meetings law as it's currently written and delete things at the end of 91 days. Because the purpose isn't to withhold information. It's, they're only safe that long in order to give citizens the chance to ask questions about whether or not the open meetings law was correctly followed. At the end of 90 days, they can no longer make any of those claims. So those executive sessions per state law are deleted at the end of 90 days. So he must continue to follow that law unless he has other direction.
Okay, so in that case, the city clerk has to delete, destroy, is actually the better word, that file, that recording Wednesday or tomorrow. But yes, I, I get it. That you, you're saying that, that, okay, so I do have a motion. And I'm gonna move that the city clerk be instructed to keep the recording for May 9th, the executive session about the city manager's review until city council has a chance to review this policy. Or six months, whichever is sooner. I, I just leave that last part off. Just, just until we have a chance to review this.
Ms. McKenney Brown, is that a legal motion at this point?
Sure. As long as everybody can clearly understood what's being stated, it could be a legal motion under, under general business. At this time, though, I would ask that it be restated because I wasn't able to track it all the way through.
Sure. I move that we keep the, do not destroy the recording from May 9th, which is the city manager's review, until city council, hmm, I could use help here, until city council has the opportunity to review this policy. Policy of destroying after 90 days on day 91. The policy of destroying recordings on day 91. Did that work?
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second. To the motion, I have three lights on. Do you want to speak to this motion? Counselor Strom, Matt Guerrero.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Strom.
So I, I understand what you're asking for, and especially as we're going through contract negotiations, be nice to have the access to it. But it sounds like the original intent was actually more for the public, less for us, though it has been really useful for us to be able to go back and refresh memory on something that we talked about three months ago. I, I guess when I originally pushed this request to speak button, it was largely, because, Counselor Olver, you had mentioned at some point you'll bring it up, and my thought is, why put it off? Let's just talk about it and get the decision made on putting it out there. Well, you already did.
Oh. Well, the, the motion I'm thinking, or the discussion, I intend at some point to ask for a study session about this because there's more than just this involved. There's the, we're keeping our records on YouTube. I don't believe that's a smart idea. I think those could all go away. There, there's a couple of other points, and the big one actually being going across council boundaries. So, so I think that's probably a separate topic. This one's easy because we're, we're not really talking about the public. We're talking about us and only us because nobody else can come in and see, and listen to that recording. It has to be a current sitting counselor. And so there, there's more than one. I think it actually takes a study session. And so that's why I haven't, I haven't had the chance to, to put it all together yet. But I'm just, right now, this motion only tries to save one thing for us to look at for a few months.
Counselor Abel.
Thank you. Ms. McKenney Brown, I was under the impression that we tape executive sessions so that if a complaint is filed, a judge can access the tape. And that is the only reason we taped the meeting.
That is my interpretation of Colorado Open Meetings Law. The way it currently reads is that if any person wants access to a tape recording, then they must ask a judge. However, there apparently is a historical process here at the city of Lakewood of which I wasn't aware until Mr. Olver started asking our new city clerk, and our new city clerk dug down and found it, which allows sitting city council members to review past executive sessions during that 90-day pendency. It concerns me. I'm just gonna tell you, it concerns me because that's not how I interpret the open meeting law. But it's, it's not a, Mr. Rob has so many things on his plate right at the moment. We haven't dealt with that. But since you're having this conversation, I will just be honest. I, I think that that's not the way, see, the open meetings law reads, and I think it does read the way you have just stated it.
Thank you.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul, and, and thanks for the good discussion on this. I, I basically want to kind of turn the discussion a little bit towards process. We have a process for these things coming forth. It is important for me for them to be on the agenda where I have time to do my proper amount of research. So we do have forms if you want to request a study session, if we want to do a minor modification. So I just think it's, it's important because again, we're all trying to make sure that we do our due diligence, and I appreciate all the good questions that came out tonight. Many of them answered my questions, but I would request, respectfully request, that the process be followed and the forms be filled out so we can get it as an actual agenda item. And then all of us have a chance to reach out and get the, you know, some of these detailed questions answered so we can have a productive conversation. Thank you.
Great, Counselor Olver, last word.
Yes, first to Counselor Abels. One of the problems with the way it's currently perceived is that if somebody isn't a counselor, one of us, isn't at a meeting, they couldn't find out what, what was, what went on in that executive session. And in fact, myself wasn't on the May 9th meeting in question. I wasn't there. I was on vacation. Counselor Mayo Guerrero was gone. Counselor Springsteen was gone. But yet, we all voted, well, everybody that was here, voted tonight on this ordinance, resolution, resolution. And if we're not allowed to go back and listen to what happened, how can we vote with any knowledge at all? Knowledgeably vote, that's the better way of saying that. As for the process, yes, I believe in the process, but there's more than one way to skin a cat. And I'm just throwing out the ideas of where I'm going to give you a heads up now. So you can start thinking about it. You can talk, talk to the constituents, and you can think it through because there's multiple opinions here already, which is why I'm not making any kind of motions tonight and not like throwing it out in front of you. But one motion, I mean, okay, I'm making one motion just to keep one thing around for a little while, but I'm not changing the world.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. There's no more discussion. Please cast your votes. And that fails eight nay, two yay. The nay being Paul Abel Franks, Matt Guerrero, Sharazai, Stuart Strom. Okay, anything else on our, oh, you had your line on Counselor Matt Guerrero for general business? Please.
I'm similarly signaling future motions, not actually making a motion at the moment. I think, you know, the conversation about Ms. Hodgson's bonus today really did bring up, I think, some good points. And those points are really around the way that regular people are having a harder and harder time making their ends meet here in Lakewood. And, you know, of course, nationally, we see this as a trend as well. And so just recognizing that some of the frustration that I was hearing from negative comments on this is really rooted in that reality to me, right? That I know lots of my friends and family are also experiencing that in Lakewood or surrounding areas. And so I am planning to do some research about prevailing wages and minimum wages. Denver City currently has a minimum wage over $15 an hour in Denver. And so recognizing that our average median income, I believe, would be about $18 an hour here in Lakewood, so if we'd be at 100% AMI, that would be the minimum wage. And so I just wanted to put out there that I will be doing some research and then very likely to bring something forward in the coming months around the idea of a possible local minimum wage as we are able to do as of just a few years ago. So thank you so much. I thought that that was really good points that the community brought up.
Great. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's go to reports. Who wants to go first? Pick a ward. Oh, all right, Ward 3 coming in.
We're starting in the middle in Ward 3 because I have no report.
All right, so which way do we go from there? Ward 1, Charlie, Counselor Abel.
Thank you. On Saturday evening, I had the pleasure of spending my evening hours with the kids from Gigi's Playhouse at Belmar Park where they had their 5K Glow Run. A few months ago, we were discussing the price, the value of Parkland, and I mentioned the smiles on the faces of kids and wondered what kind of price you would put on that. I will tell you, those kids the other night had a million dollars worth of smiles. It was a beautiful event, very encouraging. For those of you who don't know, Gigi's Playhouse is a nationwide chain, or it's not really a chain, a nationwide group of facilities that serve as achievement centers for kids with Down Syndrome. And not just the younger kids, it goes all the way through teenagers. And they have a special room over in, at the Gigi's Center in Ward 1 where the, for the teenagers to get together and lounge and hold hands or whatever teenagers do these days. So it was a really rewarding experience.
Great. Thank you for attending.
I'll just add to the mayor's point earlier, the EPA is hosting a conversation this Wednesday, August 10th, and I believe the start time is 6:00 PM Denver time, 8:00 PM Eastern time. And Lakewood will be one of the, or the communities that they're having a conversation about. So I would encourage residents of Lakewood, residents of Ward 1 who have questions about that to tune in for that. Feel free to reach out for more information on how to sign up for that. I would also say there's been two mural locations secured in Ward 1, so Piff's Tavern and Golden Music will be hosting 40 West Murals. They're still looking for three more locations that have Colfax Frontage. So if you know of businesses or buildings along Colfax that would be interested in a mural, you can reach out to Liz Black at 40 West to get connected. And then finally, in response, there won't be, I won't be hosting a ward meeting in August and September. I have office hours listed that you can sign up for, for the next few Saturdays available on the Lakewood website. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Two.
Okay, first, we're gonna have a Ward 2 meeting on Wednesday, the 17th. And I want to bring this to everybody's attention because we're gonna get an update on North Dry Gulch Project, which is of concern to a lot of people. And the second thing is, is I know I sent it out to everybody, but, but again, kudos to the city and to all the people who showed up. I personally think the Sculpture Park there at Wadsworth and Colfax is just wonderful, and they did such a good job, and, and the city should be commended as well as the public.
Yes, it is fabulous. If you haven't been by it, it's a great improvement on that corner. Those that know me know that I've got a, a long history of, of Denver Metro art, public art good in my blood. My ancestry is within the Santa Fe Arts District. My dad-
My dad used to do that work in the 70s and 80s. So, so excited to now be at the heart of some of that good public artwork here in Ward 2. The other thing that I just wanted to flag for folks is that we do have a operating safe lot here in Lakewood. And I think that we gave that update, that they were like on the path to do that at some point over the last couple of months, but wanted to ensure that people know that that is now operating. You can give monetary or other types of supply donations to Lakewood United Methodist Church. And they also have a really fabulous community garden that the residents of that lot are helping with, and I think other members of the congregation as well. And so just wanted to give a shout out for that really beautiful space that they're working to create, also in Ward 2.
So we're skipping 3. Ward 4?
We didn't skip. She declined to have a comment. My first comment would be with the school year soon approaching, you know, certainly keep an eye out for opportunities to support kids who maybe need school supplies. And I'm seeing a lot of teachers who've already ran their, their personal budgets dry, buying supplies and things for their classrooms. So just keep an eye out. I know that there's a lot of ways, like through Amazon lists and things, to help our teachers out. And I know we've got a lot of teachers in our area. And I'm going to look to my two Ward 5 people, is either of you planning on updating on the event at Bear Creek Lake Park? Then I will not steal any thunder and I will defer to you guys to do that. I just wanted to make sure that it was noticed out to the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Olver? Okay. Ward 5?
Well, I jumped the gun and I did my report under general business, so I'm going to defer to Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, well, while it's fresh on my mind before I forget, I'll start with Bear Creek Lake Park and the Bear Creek Green Belt. So as many of you know, we had a support group here in council chambers in, I believe it was March, it's been a while now, giving information about Bear Creek Lake Park and the water feasibility study that is going on with the federal government and the Colorado Wander Conservation Board. Lots of, lots of awareness has happened since that time, enough that, and lots of signs are out. We are getting more questions about that from the community. So I wanted to mention that SaveOurBearCreekLakePark.org is having an event on Saturday at the park to, A, let the residents know who are not aware of the situation yet, and B, to also give an update. Because I understand, I don't know the details, but there have been some updates that have come out. So that'll be this Saturday, 9:00 AM at Bear Creek Lake Park. If you go to their website, they do have the ability, or they're willing to help people get into the park, cover the cost for tickets, because it does cost to get in. So for anybody that is wanting to learn more, you can certainly reach out to them. Also, just an update about the park and the green belt, we're still having the toxic algae going on, so let's keep peoples, people and pets out of the water for now. Last week, I was just, I wanted to send out a lot of gratitude to the Lakewood Police Department and West Metro Fire for all of the work that they did for National Night Out. I spent probably, I don't know, five, six hours on the road visiting local National Night Out parties in Ward 5 and had a great time. And I, the police department did an amazing job, sitting down with, with some of our residents, letting them know what their day looks like, what their biggest challenges are, what some of the things that they see, what we can do ourselves to stay a little bit safer. I actually never did run into the fire trucks. I think I kept missing them, but I know that they were out. So wanted to say thank you to them. And for those of you neighborhoods that have not, did not participate last week, we are very blessed in Colorado that we have lots of opportunities to have driveway barbecues over the next few weeks. And so I wanted to invite anybody that has not had a block party yet. One of the things that I heard, I have heard a lot last year and this year is community members saying, can we please have more opportunities to build community and get to know other people around us? And this is definitely an opportunity. So I would encourage you to have a block party or pair up with somebody and share the work. And ironically, it was almost as if someone was reading my mind, we now have a grant program to help offset some of the costs. That was just announced actually today. If anybody's interested and would like some financial assistance with that, you can go to lakewood.org backslash GTGrant, and they will help, you can apply there, and awards for between $100 and $500. And then lastly, we, this last week, and Counselor Jansen hosted a ward meeting around emergency preparedness and the power grid. And I promised to give a plug for our Community Emergency Response Team training. So just wanted to bring up that we do have free disaster training for residents that's actually coming up later this month. If you want to learn more about that, you can email me, wstrom@lakewood.org, and I'll get you the appropriate information, send you the link to get signed up. But that's something that is ongoing, on and off here at Lakewood as well. That's all I have.
All right, well said. A lot going on, as you can tell. Again, I will put another plug in for Fair Free August on RTD. Get out there and jump on the train or the bus. Was it Fair Free August?
No Fair for Better Air.
No Fair for Better Air, August. So get out there and ride the train or a bus, something. Enjoy that. I would also like to thank our first responders for their National Night Out program. As you know, we did apply for a RISE grant. We actually applied for quite a few different kinds of grants through the federal government, and we're hopeful to hear some news on our 6th and Wadsworth funding, hopefully this week or next week, which would be fantastic if we have that opportunity. I'm going to convene a meeting this week with a group that runs a lot of different industries related to homeless. And we're going to talk about a potential works program for potentially the Colfax Corridor, and looking to put people to work, you know, during the day and have an opportunity for our folks to engage better in the community. So I will keep this group posted on that. And certainly, the West Colfax folks are encouraged and anxious to be a part of that conversation. Went out with the CAT team, our Community Action Team, for a ride along, and that was always incredible to see how they work with, with our community. We also had Matt, who's one of our homeless navigators, engaged in a lot of different conversations and resources. And West Metro Fire had their Arm Car, which is a 24-hour operation that goes out and not only helps the homeless, but helps other folks. So it was just really cool to see all those people work. And, you know, I mean, you see it every day, and it is real, the issues that we face and just the people that are hurting in our community. And so it's cool to see some sort of compassion, and our navigators do an incredible job with trying to help. Last but not least, I certainly would like to thank Ms. Hodgson. You know, these conversations are never easy. Certainly, our processes aren't always perfect, but we have the ability to change that and move that forward. But, I mean, I'm thinking probably almost 40 years of dedicated service to our community with accomplishments that I think when she submitted them to this group were probably five or six pages. And it's not just her, it is her whole team. And so we thank the Lakewood City staff, Ms. McKinney Brown, Mr. Rob, thank you, of course, Ms. Alazar, and the whole team, because it really is. And are we perfect? By no means were we perfect, but everybody tries to give the best service they can to the residents of Lakewood. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Goldstein, I know it's a long night for you. We appreciate you being here. I imagine you don't have anything, but if you want to have the floor. Okay, actually, and I did lie. I was going to say one more thing, but I am going to say one more thing. Please pay attention to our schedules going forward. We are so busy with meetings and 5:30 meetings, and we have a lot over the next few months, as well as a budget to mix into this. So it's going to be a busy rest of the year and look forward to continuing to serve our community. So with that, we'll adjourn at 9:01 PM.